March 7th, Martin County Board of Education. You have been hereby called to order. Please stand and make your intention.
To the fire of the United States of America, consider your public which stands on my nation under God and is visible, the very best of all.
Let us pray. Father God, it is truly a praying time. Lord, this community and our school systems suffer a tragic loss of a daddy. And we have the family of these heaven boys in our prayers and prayers. Father, come before you this evening asking for God's guidance and support as we discuss the business of our Martin County schools. Help us to get engaged in meaningful discussions and allow us to grow closer as a group and merge with the community bond. This is asking you to mind your own thoughts and actions.
All right. First item is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I want to request that the Matthew Island of the financial salary adjustment here be moved from the agenda since it has not been approved before.
Chairman made the decision to put that on the agenda as it is the superintendent and chairman's agenda. I don't see any reason to move it. But a motion has been made. It's their second. Motion being made and seconded to remove the finance salary adjustments from the agenda for the evening. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? So that's three and three. Um, now.
Yes, sir. Extinctions count. Give me a firm.
Okay, so.
Sir, would there be?
So does it stay on the agenda or is it removed?
Sir, it is. Remember, if there's an extension, it's counted with the first page.
Very well. All righty. I still need a motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
I'm opposed.
Moving seconded to approve the agenda minus finance salary adjustments. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Very well. And with this permit. Public comments. First. Are doing that public.
Mr. Chairman has asked that I read the administrative procedures for public comment. Number one, the Martin County Board of Education will schedule up to twenty minutes as it regularly scheduled monthly school board meeting, generally the first Monday of each month, for individuals or groups who wish to address the board. Any person or group can register to speak at the school board meeting until just before the meeting begins. The sign up sheet will be available in Martin County Schools Administrator Office for any individual or group who wishes to address the board. The sign up sheet will request to follow the name, address, and phone number of the person or persons making the request, their organization or group if any represented, and a brief explanation of the nature of the item. The board chair will provide a summary of the changes for public comment prior to each session. Individuals will be given three minutes to make their presentations. Requests to speak for a group will be granted five minutes to address the board. Individuals or groups will be called on to speak in the order on the sign up sheet. If an individual is not present or declines to speak, the next person on the sign up sheet will be called upon. If the twenty minute period ends during a speaker's presentation, the public comment period will end at the conclusion of the time period allotted to the presenter. Any material that the individual or group wishes to present to the board should be submitted prior to the meeting so that they can be presented. The board will not respond to comments except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The superintendent will provide a written response for questions posed to the board within ten working days of the meeting. The board will not give public comments relating to personnel issues or student issues that are under investigation by the administration.
Um, first speaker, Don Regan.
Dear Board members and Martin County Schools members, I am here today again to request that masks be made optional for Martin County Schools, students, staff, and residents. To say that I was disappointed last month on your decision is an understatement. I was quite disappointed. After the meeting, I did some polls with other parents. And what I found out that out of the twenty-one parents that I contacted, twenty-one favored of masking optional, and only one parent stated that they were okay with their child wearing a mask, and the child was okay wearing a mask. Many things have changed since my last meeting. Martin County is now at the level that Mr. Gray from the Health Department stated that needed to be for recommendations for masking optional. Cases have dropped dramatically. And currently, according to the figures that I had as of last Friday, we have eleven active cases versus a hundred last month. Eight point three positivity rate versus over thirty-three last month. The governor on two seventeen recommended that school districts mask optional, as well as the CDC recommended this at the end of February. Pitt County Schools and Bearberry Strata Schools since last month have gone optional. And one of our largest school systems of Wake County has gone optional as of today. Some of the other larger counties in our state include Forsyth, which is Winston-Salem, Guilford, which is Greensboro, and Nettlandburg, which is Charlotte. They are all optional. This information provided, we are requesting that the decision of making masks optional be implemented effective tonight. We are hoping that we can have this information tonight before we go home, if that's possible. I'm requesting that if that is an option. We know that your decisions made are always in the best interest of our children, and thank you for your time and efforts in making these decisions. I don't think we should have a choice at this point. And as a parent, I'm asking you to just try these masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nikki Andrews.
Well, both back. Both of us pretty much have the same agenda. We want these masks to be optional. I talked to you last time about different reasons why, because my personal opinion and some scientific fact to it. I also would like to point out that several cases were brought up where masks had been on children in gym class, like Donna mentioned last month. Her own daughter having anxiety, my own child also having anxiety with having to wear masks, my eight-year-old absolutely positive, pretty much never wearing it the proper way, and a teacher having to be, you know, a disciplinarian over something that takes away from teaching, which is what they're there for to begin with. I'd also like to point out that even talked about attendance rates dropping in the schools. Something else that is very interesting to me is all elected appointed officials are bonded. Sheriff's, government, school board, et cetera. And we feel if your child has been harmed, you can file a claim against their fidelity. The claim is to truth, I mean, it can be done. It's commonly being bonded by a bail bondsman. And an investigation occurs, state and federal government funding stops, school funding, federal government assistance into the investigation of government. There are deductibles paid by the bonded state government official just for having a claim filed against them. There is a website that I know that we can go to. It has been done for autistic children. It has been done for having to wear masks and then also in the classes. And there was one child who even absolutely passed away from us. And that was in Pennsylvania. And if you need proof of any of this, and you would like for me to give you this information, I would be more than happy to. I also would like to say, I'd like to see masks made optional tonight before we leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Cleo Harold.
Good afternoon. Twenty twenty-one has been a very difficult year for the staff here at Martin County Schools and other counties. Some staff have moved to other counties to work. Staff are retired. Some staff are leaving the profession, and some staff are not returning. The Journal of Seniary has eliminated longevity pack. And I'm here to ask that Martin County Board of Education would consider, like other counties in the state, to provide a petition bonus of twenty-five hundred dollars to every staff member who plans on returning in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. By doing this, this is a message that Martin County Schools cares about their employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harold. That's public comment. Next item, student recognition.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. My pleasure, sir. Thanks for the board. So I'm going to turn it over to our faculty records for the recognitions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry? Go ahead.
The consent.
The consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped rather. Consent agenda. Motion to approve in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. She now has a committee. Thank you very much. Sorry I missed over that. Now, please carry on with the student recognition.
All right. So we all have certificates ready. So let me invite our faculty record staff to come up to the front, and then I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Tonight, we here have Riverside Middle School Boys Basketball Coach Markell Freeman and his assistants, Mr. Howell. They're going to honor Riverside Middle School Basketball for an undefeated season and a conference tournament championship, and also Riverside Middle School Children's. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Howell.
Did you say undefeated season?
Yes, sir. Fairly.
If the microphone will pick you up, so you don't have to.
Vice Senator Lee, Chairman Hees, we're going to talk itself every morning in the morning. Our great and senior is yes, we do. I'm going to quote Markell, we should have an undefeated season. Our first name on this for boys basketball is Jaden Moore. Next is Jeremir Williams. Jeremy Hollis. Jaderie Ron. And Jaderie. Shep. Jaderie Ron. Jason Shep. Christian Beal. Paul Metzler. Justin Harold. Anthony S. Austin Cool. And Jaden Moore. Okay, our children's. Twenty twenty-one, we're in a children's scene. Kayla Beach. Timori Avon. Iger. Griffin. Daniel Griffin. And Jesus Listor. And I'm Howard. Donnie Deke. And I am Elizabeth. Rashiah Murphy. Mariana Taylor. Rashiah Tom. And my April W. And the legacy, Rip. Again, I'd say to the board, thank you for the support this year to the twenty twenty-one RMS athlete scene.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, and your coaches and all of your athletes. All right, we'll move on to the Martin County and Martin County Schools COVID update. Ready?
Good afternoon, Chairman Hees. My pleasure, sir. Thank you for having me present tonight. As you heard earlier, we are experiencing some very, very low COVID cases. The update we put out this afternoon, we had four new cases in the last four days since our last update last Thursday. Carroll County, we only had two over the weekend, and then Washington County, four. Three people are hospitalized right now. Current situation we have is three. That's one per county, because we have records for hospitalized, so one Martin County resident. Total tests completed. We are seeing those numbers get to the point where I'd like to see them at five percent. Couple weeks ago, we had, at the height of Omicron variant, we had about well over thirty percent of the tests we were performing come back positive. Last update we put out Tuesday, Martin County, five hundred ninety-one tests, forty-nine came back positive, so about eight point three percent. Tomorrow, our report will come out, it'll be below five percent. And so we are in that point we talked about it out last week. So we've seen a really, really big decrease in the number of cases we have right now. All of our outbreaks have not had any new cases added to the outbreak facilities. And we, Williamson House would like to come off the list this Friday. Since the last time we talked, we've not had much of an increase in the vaccination rate in Martin County. Still remains about fifty-three percent that had single dose, forty-nine percent had that second dose, or one dose of Johnson Johnson. And those who have had that full course of either Johnson Johnson or Johnson or Pfizer, forty-three percent of those have come back that are boosted vaccines. So if you look at that, half the people are vaccinated, half the dose has been boosted, so about a quarter of the county residents have been fully vaccinated and boosted. But again, we are seeing a really low number of cases. We've seen a drop in the amount of testing services. We're still continuing to open our testing centers in Scottville here in Williamson, Robinsonville. We've added a site in Jantle two weeks ago. That's in Gardens, so it's a Jantle address, but right there at Gospel Light Church Christ, and that's going to be, we do that Monday through Thursday, ten to six, so it gives kind of people a little bit of extra time after work to get up. So we have three testing sites in Martin County that are going to continue to go on. And then the next one in Washington County starting tomorrow. We have one in Columbia. So we have five sites throughout the county. Most schools have tested. We have tests available at every supermarket, grocery store, gas station. But if you like a free test, you go to our sites here in the county. As you can see on the back page of that daily report we put out, cases in North Carolina are decreasing, have been decreasing over the last month. We are back to pre-Omicron levels. So we're very, very pleased with that, and we don't anticipate much of an increase going forward. Also included, we got a community burden map. This is the CDC guidance before. What we were looking at was a community map based on percent number of cases per population and percent positive. But with all the home tests, that percent positive number, we can't get an accurate number of how many tests are actually being done. So what they're doing is with the more syndromic surveillance, like hospitalizations, to indicate if we're seeing a rise in cases. So they really want to look at how many people are hospitalized going forward, and that's probably how we're going to do it after the pandemic phase ends and we move into a pandemic state. We're going to try to focus on how many people are hospitalized in the last week. So with that, Martin City and Washington County are the medium, that yellow color, so very, very low. If we had a little bit lower hospitalization rate, which is already extremely low, we would be in that blue, that mode state. So according to the guidance that the governor put out last, about two weeks ago, and took effect today in the toolkit, Park Schools Toolkit, the big change that the schools should do to voluntary mask in accordance with local authorities, with our medium rating, that's what we're recommending, is in that maximum. And that includes students, staff, athletics, and transportation. All right? With that, I'll answer any questions down there. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. All right, appreciate it. Thank you. Thomas?
You've got, you should have our updated numbers for this week. And they're on the downside, like they're going down as well as they were last week. We had two positive from time to time cases last week. As you can see, you have now sent about twenty-five kids not into good symptoms. So our numbers are going down as well. And no stat numbers positive since last week. And then those are our numbers just humans that sent from getting out. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Thomas? Thank you very much. Ms. Rogers, teacher assistant salaries.
Good evening. Ms. Bowen and I had prepared some additional information, and we actually had that in February, but it was not on the agenda to say I'm bringing you the information tonight. The first page, if you didn't flip it over, and I would have come back to that sheet. That's a sheet that I gave out to the board previously when we were discussing the teacher assistant salaries. Ms. Hees, you had mentioned before, we had given you and this progress some information on fund balance. And then this council had got information on this previous year when she was board chair. This second page is just kind of giving you a history of where we're at and how we came to this point. If you can see in two thousand and fifteen, the four point five million that we were at at that point had to do with the ARR funding, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And at that point in time, we received additional federal funding that did not have supplanting rules. So in years prior to that, so we were able to move expenses that we normally pay out local monies over to the federal ARR budgets, and that's how we were able to build our fund balance to the point of four point five. You can see from that point continually, each year, the numbers that in parentheses show each year what we used out of fund balance up until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, which at that point, we were down a little bit, over two million dollars, down to two point four. This past year in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, which you just had the audit report presented to you last month, but we had already given workup eliminated figures, and the audit two figures represented at June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, we were at three point four million. We actually had an increase in fund balance of over a million dollars. If you can turn to very last page, that kind of gives the board an idea. And again, the majority of these savings are because of COVID-related activities. First of all, the four hundred and sixty thousand dollar savings was because I was able to move, due to vacancies, we were able to switch as many positions as we could in the R C O O three from local over to the state. The state transportation budget had monies that they could not spend. There are limited categories that you can transfer that money to. We transferred it to O O three, which allowed us in total to save four hundred and sixty thousand dollars locally. The second line item, one hundred seventy-five thousand, was due to teacher vacancies that we had during that year that we were not able to fill. So we again transferred, those vacancies were in state, so we transferred any local teachers over to state, as well as additional supplement expenses from local over to state. One hundred and sixty-three thousand was related to money we did not have to spend that set aside in the budget for the pension spiking case that we have right now with the retirement system related to previous superintendent salary. So that is ongoing, and we do have to allot for that, but we did not have to spend it. We were able to save seventy-five thousand dollars in our local budget related to SRO monies. That was because there were line items in the federal COVID budgets that we received that allowed us to transfer some of those expenditures over to COVID and pay for them with federal funds. The eighty thousand was related to local funds that we didn't have to spend because of SULFs, as most of you will remember. You know, during the period that the schools were closed and COVID, we weren't bringing SULFs into the camp, so we were able to save that eighty thousand. One hundred and fifteen thousand were related to teacher vacancies that we had in the state small county funding. That's one of the very few, if not the only line item in the state budget that does allow us to pay for electricity. And we had teacher vacancies in there that we could not, could not fill. So we moved local electricity monies over to state. And then the final forty-nine thousand there was related to exceptional children services that we could use COVID funding for, and so we did not have to use that out of our local budget. So this just gives the board, there were some other line items that were much, much, you know, less than this, but this gives the board the general idea of how we were able to add a little over a million dollars to our fund balance since past year. There is already talk among the finance officers and other state agencies about the COVID cliff or the ESSER cliff. And basically, what that means is as these budgets fall off over the next three years, you know, how local agencies will sustain the things that they can pay for or shift it over to COVID that are ongoing expenses. So yes, our fund balance is at a good point right now, and I expect this current year to be at a good point and get it here in. But as the COVID funding drops off, a lot of expenses that we're able to move over to there, you know, will, it certainly will maintain this level after that point. So that's what I needed to give you a summary of where we are, how we got there, and what we foresee in a few years to come. If you will go back to page one, the chart at the top is exactly what we gave to the board earlier. I can't remember if it was the December or January meeting when we looked at the teacher assistance. teacher assistance initially, but this top chart is just to explain to you the calendar for a regular ten-month, full ten-month employee, and then the calendar that we currently have for teacher assistants. Um, as you can see, teacher assistants, their total days are two hundred, and the ten-month employees, if they have worked a full ten months, their calendar is two hundred and fifteen days, so there's a difference there of fifteen days, and that's a part due to mandatory work days, there's a difference of six there, and then the optional work days, which is a difference of nine. Based on what I calculated before, and those calculations involve every single teacher assistant we have, whether they were a B C teacher assistant, or just a regular teacher assistant, um, when we calculated, um, those monies, the cost of the teacher assistant on a daily basis, including their benefits, were nine thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. So, the very next block there gives you what additional cost would be to fund these days for the teacher assistants, if you look at them on an annual basis. Just with the note right below that, that next year, the General Assembly has already approved the greater of two point five percent increase for a minimum of fifteen dollars per hour, so that amount will slightly go up for next year, but this gives you an idea of what now, of what the annual cost would be. So, next, at the bottom in bold, let me explain to you where we are in terms of our work days and what are left in this current, this year. Um, in the current year, there are only four more mandatory work days. The teacher assistants are already scheduled to work on two of those days. So if you gave them the other two days back, then that cost would be eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Also, in the current year, there are five more optional days remaining, considering now and the end of the school year. The teacher assistants aren't scheduled to work currently for any of those days, so the cost to add those remaining five days in the current year we're in would be forty-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars and ten cents. If you gave them all of those days, possible days back together, that's a cost of sixty-four thousand one twenty-eight and fifty-four cents. So, again, that's for the current year, from where we are right now, to get to the end of the year, if the board decides to make a change in, in our case, in those days to the TAs. I'm not sure if you have any other questions, I know, um, Ms. Bowen, um, and myself contacted some other units, um, what we basically, and I know all of you were not on the board when the decision was originally made, when the, when the days were lowered for the two days, but different counties made different decisions at that point in time. Some counties cut all the positions necessary at that time for the remaining teacher assistants to keep all of their days. We did a combination and cut as few as we could, as far as losing any jobs, but then reduced the days for the TAs that we had, so we could keep as many as possible. Um, and I think other counties might have done a combination of that.
There, there were some questions, according, um, at one of the last meetings, we had a teacher assistant to talk about how she was losing money. Was it because, what did that mean? Was it because there was a work day that she wasn't gonna be able to work, so we take money out of her pay?
The way the teacher assistants, our teacher assistants are paid right now, is they are prepaid, just like, um, the teachers are.
It depends.
Yes, they are. And that means when they, when they come to work in, in mid-August or towards the end of August, at the end of August, they get a full check for working a full month, just like the teachers do. But because we don't employ them for the full two hundred and fifteen days, if we have a work day during a month, then their pay is reduced for one day, or to maybe two, if we have two work days that month, wherever those fifteen days fall in the calendar, we have to reduce their monthly check by that amount. Um, some counties pay teacher assistants hourly, so when they get their check, they don't actually see a reduction in their teacher assistant pay, they're just paid for the hours that are actually worked, and they're paid after the fact of them. But we, we continue to pay, um, to, to prepaid as we do with teachers.
This is part of the, of what I said earlier. So with this information that we received tonight, we presume to the county commissioners, you know, by that, you see, if they can assist and give us some of our, the work days, some of the work days that, that the teacher assistants are requesting.
Be careful.
If I understood your question correctly, with the information that we have before you, is that the information that will be used or sent before the county commissioners have the budget?
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. It's not all of it, uh, it's entirety, it's certainly part of whatever is the most important component of it.
So have, have we considered, if not immediately, the entire six, fifteen days, five days, have we considered looking at, have we, um, less than days, maybe two or three days, back to the, the plan?
So that's the part that we need to go back and try to figure out right now, how much do we need to present to the county commissioners. Uh, so I'm sure that you all, not only in the council, but you all, you probably have some ideas or suggestions about what needs to be presented, and we're certainly welcome to hear those suggestions. Uh, not sure if tonight is the best, you know, time, um, but the answer to your question is, there are different possibilities to present, different things to the county commissioner. What is important to remember is what Ms. White just mentioned just now, and what she called the, uh, cliff, what we're talking about. So, uh, we are, I hope, uh, and we have a county commissioner sitting here behind me all these days, and we have invited different folks to come in and speak, uh, at different times when necessary, um, but we are not unique in this sense that, um, uh, I think different entities, governmental entities are seeing that the amounts of money that districts are receiving, thinking that perhaps the district may not need as much money as, as before. So I, I repeat the same type of caution that Ms. White just made many times, you know, there, there is a funding requirement that school systems need to have.
So to be clear with your answer, not only will we consider these work days, but also you can opt for it, and, and, and leave it, at least one or two days, at least two days.
So I think that if we're looking just to mention a commitment of a number of days, I don't think that we're ready to do that. Uh, first of all, you know, we haven't gotten to that level of planning yet. But I appreciate the suggestion.
Well, that's, that's one thing that I would love to see part of, is such an indicator we cannot meet that higher request, but it means, you know, work towards being favorable and go way to other.
Right. So not to correct, uh, me, Council, but I'm not sure that there was any specific amount of days that were mentioned, but I mentioned was, that's a great suggestion, and we're open to suggestions for planning purposes. Again, I think that what is important to remember is, you know, the amounts of money that you see there were amount, were the amounts that were funded in very specific circumstances, whether a school was out, no subsidies were needed, we had some good folks in the field for your vacancies, et cetera.
Well, here, any day working, there's no six, ninety-four days and nine optional days, but that's fifteen days we have here. But I'm saying, if you can look at, at a lower number.
Yeah, I think we're going to look again, we're looking at all options.
Okay, so hopefully it will be at our, that budget meeting?
Well, like every budget season, the board is presented with different suggestions, that that's what they are, they are suggestions, and then you get to decide on what we need to present to the county commissioners.
So that's what I'm, I'm heard.
Well, that will be a decision at the board.
Any other questions? Counselor, I understand you want to go back and address earlier, but.
Good evening, board. Uh, I seldom make, uh, problematic mistake, but I do need to make a problematic mistake, right? Um, so, um, earlier when we were on the approval of the agenda, uh, the board, uh, for the board policy and Robert Fools operates with a majority vote. Majority vote means that in order for a motion to pass, it has to be more than fifty percent. Uh, currently present, you have seven members. Um, whatever emotion is called upon, um, in order for that motion to pass, it must have four members, not four, unless more than two members are upstate. Does that make sense to everyone? So, um, earlier, during this council's motion, there was a tie of three with Mr. Hill saying. What that means is, uh, that motion failed to get to the majority vote. Uh, the effect of Mr. Hill's extension was not to be counted in majority, but simply to not be counted at all, therefore, the majority was not reached. So the effect of that vote is that that motion fails, uh, for not getting to the majority. And I want to correct my mistake as soon as I can, and I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Chair and his vice chair, um, for giving this opportunity. I will take your questions, but that's the effect, um, of that.
So the item remains on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Now, Mr. Chair, you may want to do is revisit, uh, the approval of the agenda with that item on the chair, on the agenda. That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Well, we can do that, but we'll move further. I need a motion to go back and approve the agenda with a financial salary adjustments back on the agenda. Move that second, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
Mr. Johnson?
To approve the agenda as it was originally written.
Okay.
All right, one more time, all in, all in favor, opposed.
I intend to be, that we just split my, 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 my.
Sure.
Lord, I don't know what we do, what we do.
Will approve the agenda as.
A, 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 yes.
I think we have four, two. Back on the agenda. Uh, the next item is the school resource officer, Memorial Anthem of Understand, Dr. Fonseca.
Beginning of the year, we, 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 the board to report, you know, in fact, we just have, uh, the annual revising of the SRO contract, or Memorial Anthem of Understanding Project. So back into the table, questions or my recommendation, my recommendation is that we continue our partnership with the church.
Sheriff Manning is also here, he has a bad question. Are there any questions for Dr. Fonseca or Sheriff Manning on the school resource officer, Memorial Anthem of Understand? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say, um, I, I do value our relationship with our school resource officer and the school board, and all the schools, I think they play a big part in keeping the schools safe. Uh, I, I noticed, uh, uh, purpose mentioned today, we had a little incident, um, that our school resource officer got involved, kept our kids safe, uh, with that incident going on in the community. So those incidents do occur from time to time, where we have to put schools in lockdown, and we straight have, uh, professional players to, to make that happen. We were in constant contact with, uh, Dr. Fonseca, and we just got a great working relationship the way we have it, and I think the, uh, MOU stands for itself, I would like as well to ask you to approve that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, need a motion for a senior, Ms. Burris?
Yes, sir. I'm going to Martin County Board of Education, and to close session, subject to the vice from the county, to short to the North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, that's D H E, eleven, A one, and A six, to prevent the disposal of competent and personal information under G S four fifteen, D, that's D nineteen, and to consider matters related to initial informant and individual. The board will go to both sessions, to still the General Statute, one year, three, that's two eighteen, that eleven, A three, and so with the board's party, and go to preserve that the twenty-five three minutes to consider competent student matters provided in North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, that U H C, that eleven, A one, and the Family Education Right and Privacy Act, twenty, U S C, with one, two, three, two, and North Carolina General Statute, one fifteen, six, that's one, eleven.
We have a motion for close session, is there a second?
Okay.
Move consecutive, all in favor of close session, raise your hand. All right, we are going to close session. All right, we are going into close session.
He had the air zone on him, sixty-eight.
Alright, we're ready to move forward. The first item on the action item agenda is personnel that's presented in closed session. Motion and a second to approve personnel, all in favor, show hands. Next item is the closed session minutes for January twenty-fourth and February seventh. Alright, motion to approve the closed session minutes, keep them closed. Motion and a second, all in favor, raise hand. Thank you. Personal leave policy seventy-five ten. Motion and second to approve personal leave policy seventy-five. All in favor, show hands please. Alright, next item is the finance salary adjustments. Information was presented to you. Motion to approve, second. We have a lack of the second. Teacher assistant work days.
Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation, do you think that?
I think it's property surplus resolution.
You must be looking at the wrong agenda. Is there a? So, Mr. Chair, I thought that. Our teacher assistant work days, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, can we table that until we do our finance meeting to look at other options based that we should consider not?
Motion.
That's the motion I made.
Teacher assistant work days has been moved to be tabled until the March twenty-first work session. It's a second, all in favor, show hands please. Alright, that is tabled till the twenty-first.
Can I get your?
Alright, we have the property surplus resolution.
Make the recommendation that we move or?
It's just resolution.
Oh, I. Do you accept the resolution?
And the method?
And the method of close, um.
Negotiating.
Negotiation.
Negotiated offer upset.
Negotiation offset.
We have a motion and second to approve the resolution with the. Give me that wording one more time so I can get it right.
With the method of disposition being negotiation, negotiation offer upset.
Negotiated offer upset then. All in favor, show hands please. Now, thank you. Alright, we all heard the recommendation from Mr. Gray and we heard the governor's recommendation, so it's time to make our monthly mask option vote.
I believe did not mandate masks.
Please very second. Second, all in favor of masks being optional, please show your name. Masks are optional, effective immediately. And last item on our agenda for the evening is the.
I believe we need to see clarification about the table we have called teacher assistant work days. Apparently the work session is the workers with capital outlay. Would the board like to have current expense discussed in that work session as well?
Originally, we're gonna have a budget session on the fourteenth. But Ms. Rogershan said that she could cover all of that at the twenty-first meeting, so we have cleared her. Everybody bark the fourteenth off your count, yes ma'am?
What we normally do and have done in the past is the first work session we have, we normally cover capital outlay and the maintenance in the March work session, and in the work session we have in April, we normally cover current expense. We can certainly discuss the teacher assistance at the next work session, but the entire current expense budget, I can't stop doing all of that at the next work session and the capital outlay and maintenance as well.
Should we go back to that immediately?
I think it's just, our administration wants to know the question, do you want to have the teacher assistance covered at that work session? The answer is yes, it just is taken out of order because it's one piece of the current expense budget and all of the job.
Barbara, is your motion one of yours?
Well, give me some more strategy on what you can do for the current money. What you just said.
I'm sorry, I don't feel like I'm yelling, bring it back to the group. I said normally the March work session, the first work session is when we do the capital outlay request and the maintenance request, all the building related requests. And then the second budget work session is when we normally do go over the current expense budget, so that is where we would build the TA, anything additional for the teacher assistance would be built into the current expense budget. We can certainly start talking about those at the next work session, but the entire current expense budget won't be ready on the fourteenth, so I just wanted to make sure.
So, my question is to table the TA salary until our current expense budget comes up, and then they can give us options, not all of what they presented tonight, give us other options.
We, it's understood that when the, when current expense comes up?
We don't need to vote on that. Alright, the final item is the school resource officer memorandum of understanding. Motion, move that seconded to approve the school resource officer memorandum of understanding, all in favor, show hands. Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna go around the table and have board conference, Ms. Cargill?
Congratulations to rich, uh, new student for system zero win. And it's great that our children are participating and those that are feeling are happy and our children are kind of disappointed that we didn't get half of these students here. I don't know why, but it would be us, for me, I would love to see that we just have a year. And, but congratulations, congratulations to rich, that was outstanding at baseball, his basketball, basketball excellence.
Also like to let you know, what Ms. Caltzer said, congratulate these students on their accomplishment. I just have one question, I understand that there are some employees that have not been moved to this building, Dr. Fonseca, can you kind of let me know when Ms. Gird and Ms. McGee will be, I thought they're supposed to be bringing to this building?
So, is that something to discuss right now for everybody, or can I just communicate with you directly?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it out there, because I just got to, um, wondering about that, and I'll give you another thing, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope you get what you said, that's ready and set. I excuse the board here and suppose that we are the Republican committee, and again we do the Senate amendment, and here it is, March, and sale is not completed.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, with any stress you can on this, share the meaning of their quick action and the communication to the board of course, the president of course, just to step in and notify, there's a lot of activity going on, and it's truly tragic, but really appreciate it, you being, you know, transparent and, and on a lighter note, I would like to wish you a net and a happy birthday, because that is dedication for someone who turned double living and come and participate.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Alright, well, I think most of the things I'd like to have said have been said for that basketball team, to have a winning season, or to have a season period, play in a sport at school is a big deal, have a winning season is a big deal, but to have an undefeated season, can't wait for those guys to get in high school, let's see a place in high school ball, and let's have an undefeated season there too. Sheriff Manning, thank you for your cooperation, and I do appreciate the communications that we had from everybody today on the incident, the sad incident that took place there in town. And with that, I'm gonna just ask for a motion, well, I don't have to ask you a motion, I'm so interested, the meeting is the.